The special meeting of the city council to order on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four at five thirty in the council chambers. So our disaster procedures, you know what they are, to go by Sarah's department and down the steps in case of a tornado. And then if it would be fire, we would go out the exit door and then congregate together so we have a count of who's all spoken for. Okay, the meeting is being videotaped, so it's important that everyone speak directly into a microphone when speaking. So let's start with roll call. Alderperson Jenny.
Alderperson Whitaker.
Here.
Alderperson Schneider.
Here.
Alderperson Duco.
Here.
Alderperson Eris.
Here.
Alderperson Randall.
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson.
Here.
Alderperson Anthony.
Here.
Alderperson Ovian.
Here.
Alderperson Dentelman.
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer.
Here.
Alderperson Steele.
Here.
Alderperson Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderperson Elmore.
Here.
Alderperson Weigant.
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan. Alderperson Ostoff.
Here.
Mayor, Dentelman and Sullivan are excused.
Okay, roll call of department heads. Jenny?
City Attorney Horner.
President.
Director of IT, Ty Buckner.
Here.
Director of Economic Development, Cliff Cross.
President.
Director of Grants and Special Projects, Eric Schauster.
Here.
And that's Mayor, that's all that was asked to be here.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. No, a public hearing? I don't think we have.
No, I shouldn't have left that.
Oh, yeah. Public participation, I don't think we have anybody for it. Okay, so let's start with the resolution. Jenny, you want to read the resolution?
You know what, I didn't just ask for a motion to read. Can I read them? Are we, can we read them together? Well, ask for a motion.
Oh, he's, okay, he wants them separate.
So we need a, a motion just to read them by title only then?
Here, so move. Schaefer, second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Seven A, Resolution Thirty-five Twenty-one, a resolution of support for the city of Bellevue two thousand twenty-four Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program, ITEP funding application for the West Bellevue Bike Trail Phase Two project.
Here, so move. Schaefer, second.
Brian, discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to propose an amended motion in which we would authorize city staff to apply for the ITEP grant. However, the project should reflect the need to apply for sidewalks throughout our city, including all eight wards. ITEP provides a priority to projects which are shovel-ready and which sidewalk replacement would be. Furthermore, they give priority to sidewalks along major roadway arteries and known to receive better scoring. Additionally, there would be no right-of-way acquisition or lighting, which provides less funding as indicated in the project included. Furthermore, there'd be little to no design cost as all this work could be handled by our city engineer. I would propose the following locations to update up to two thousand feet of sidewalk in each ward at a cost of one hundred and seventy-five thousand per ward, including in Ward One, Sherman Street between Lebanon Avenue and East A Street. Ward Two, West Main Street between Seventeenth Street and Twenty-eighth Street. Ward Three, between, on West Main Street between Twenty-eighth Street and Forty-eth Street. Ward Four, West Main Street, west of Eighty-seventh Street. Ward Five, the areas immediately surrounding South Side Park. Ward Six, the Dawn Heights subdivision. Ward Seven, Sherman Street between East A Street and Carlisle Avenue. And Ward Eight Street, West Main Street, west of Eighty-seventh Street and North Belt West between Frank Scott Parkway and Seventy-fourth Street. These locations would be shovel-ready projects along major roadways that would provide our city with the highest possibility of award for this grant. And furthermore, it would allow the ITEP to benefit all wards of the city and provide immediate progress to our most valuable resource being our residents. I think, as, looking into ITEP, this, we have a lot of bike trails. We have a bike trail under construction in that West Main Street area already, and I believe this would be a much more applicable project for, for all eight wards.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Eric, did you want? Oh, Kent? Yes.
Yes, well, I think that Alderperson Whitaker's amended motion is noble, okay? If anything else, I would suggest, okay, that what we're dealing with here is the West Bellevue Bike Trail Phase Two, period. That is what this is all about here. So I would encourage Alderperson Whitaker to talk to the city engineer about the possibility of applying for a separate get, grant for the sidewalks.
We had no opportunity to discuss this project. It was brought to city council without a motion from the Streets and Grades Committee, so I feel this is the appropriate place to, to discuss the, the amended motion and what can better suit all eight wards. The West Main Bike Trail hasn't been touched in twelve years, and all of our wards are in desperate need of sidewalk repair, so I would encourage action on the amended motion.
Yes, Rafi?
I applaud Alderman Whitaker for his consideration about the sidewalks and, and the curbing along West Main Street especially. But I am against using that money for what's been appro, what it's been appropriated for. Like Alderman Randall, that money was set aside, but we didn't use it.
That was not because of us.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But I will say this much, what in the world are we doing with the TIF money? TIF money is supposed to be used for infrastructure. And we use it for people that want to come into our city, but we don't use it for the residents. Tax increment financing, we have basically sold our constituents a bill of goods. Thanks.
Yes, oh, Brian, you went to?
I would just like to point out, Mayor, that this isn't money that's sitting around. This is a request to apply for a grant for new funding. That, we, we don't have any money currently allocated to this project.
Yes, Johnny?
Let me hear from Eric. Eric, could you expound on this thing a little bit further?
Yes. Thank you. So a little bit of history. So we, we apply for, for an ITEP grant for this phase of the bike trail, which would connect the Signal Hill Trail at Wesley Drive, go down Foley up to Main, so a trail would be constructed down Foley. And then from where Foley and Main intersect, there'd be a shared lane down Main Street towards Frank Scott and connect with the existing trail, the existing citizens to Bellevue Trail. So this is kind of the final, one of the final pieces of that puzzle to connect far West Bellevue with, with the, you know, near Altoff. The original alignment of the trail had a railroad crossing. And try, the reason it never got built was because the railroad would not grant any access. And it was back and forth for about twelve years before that was finally scrapped. And, and IDOT came back to the city, and Garrett, you please correct me if I'm wrong, because there's a time limit, there's a ten-year time limit on these funds, that you have to return it. IDOT has also encouraged the city to reapply for this trail with the new alignment. So we've been encouraged by the funding agency to, to submit this application. It's about one point seven miles. That would finish that piece of the trail. Total project cost is just under three million dollars, and we'd be applying for just under two point four million for the trail, so.
Now, will that be connecting into the six million dollar bike trail that's being built in the Teklenburg by the county, by Altoff?
No, there would be another piece that would need to connect this with, with that trail. And, but, so the sidewalks, you know, would be a fundable project, but we don't have cost estimates. We don't have, and, and one of the requirements is a cost estimate.
We, we have all that documentation ready to provide to you should this motion pass.
Okay. The applications also due Monday.
Correct.
And there's quite a bit of paperwork to be done on that. I'm, I'm working on another applicant, I'm, I'm working on two ITEP applications. The other is to complete the streetscape from twelfth to seventeenth on Main, so.
Yes, Scott?
I'm just going to make sure I understand correctly. So this is the last step for this bike trail? Is that what you said? This is the last?
This, this would be the, well, there, there would, there could be future phases to connect other trails, but.
But in this bike trail presently, once we finish this, it won't connect to the bike trail that is the long one that goes, that where they put the bridge over.
The, the county trail and that, yeah, they wouldn't connect there yet.
They're not. So this bike trail presently is, is just along Foley Drive?
There is a, yeah, so the Signal Hill Trail stops at Foley, and there's a gap between Foley and Frank Scott Parkway, and there was a bike trail. So this would complete that, complete that trail.
Okay, Lilly?
I guess the question I, questions I would like answered is if this would have gone the opposite way, will we have to start all over with engineering costs and how much? And, I mean, what we already have paid and started with this, is that all just going to be scrapped too then? Or, because I think.
Well, we're giving, we have to give back the money because it, it was, I think the first phase was finished was in two thousand ten or two thousand twelve?
I think it was two thousand ten, eleven.
Two thousand ten. So this has been going on, and I know that Cliff, Eric and I, I believe Eric, you were with us when we met at IDOT, over this, this phase about giving back the money because it was over ten years, it wasn't anything produced. So I, I don't know if it would be a situation where we hire a new contractor?
We'd have to start all over from scratch, wouldn't we, with plans and all that?
Well, you're, you're, you've already paid for several design plans. Is, am I correct on that?
Cascadia Engineering did all the initial designs on, on this phase that was originally funded. They have updated those costs and, and with the realignment and everything else, so.
So there is extra costs now?
There, and, and if we were to, you know, and, and all the engineering is not completed yet. So they've done preliminary engineering one, which is kind of the conceptual design. The final design is, you know, down to the nuts and bolts is not completed yet. That would be part of this project, paid for with these, with this fund, with these funds, as well as the construction engineering, which is the final, you know, inspections and all that. So if we were to scrap this application and go with the sidewalks, yeah, if we wanted to go after this trail again, if those costs had to be updated, construction costs would go up as well.
But we can use our in-house engineer to do this without going out sourcing?
Not for the bike trail, it's not something.
No, the sidewalks.
Our in-house engineer does sidewalk.
So, so are we guaranteed, if we scrap the, the grant plan for the bike trail, are we guaranteed the sidewalk?
We're not guaranteed anything. We're not guaranteed this applic, this funding.
Okay, okay.
So we're not guaranteed either?
We're not guaranteed either.
No.
Let me, let me, I can ask the Ward Eight, all the purposes, are you all, are you all good with this plan?
To scrap the bike trail?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I would hate to lose a project in Ward Eight, but I think that if we could also implement a sidewalk, sidewalk project, I would be amenable to that. Because this has taken very long. I have not heard from one constituent that is really invested in this bike trail. I'm not saying that they aren't out there, I just haven't heard from any of them. I can't speak for Nora. And with the county trail, I would be much more hesitant to vote for the sidewalk project if we didn't have this county trail that is very close. You know, if, if that's, we're trying to get the county moving and all that, I think that would take care of the needs of what this bike trail is trying to accomplish, right? But, you know.
Dennis was first.
I think we all need sidewalk. I mean, I, I take a sidewalk in Ward Eight everywhere.
Can I ask, how were the sidewalk, how did you come? Oh. Yeah, Dennis has been waiting. And then Chris has been waiting. Okay, Dennis, you want to go?
Yes, I have, Brian's got a great idea, I think. I have more people walking on sidewalks in my ward and doing the bike trails, hundred percent. Number two, is Cascadia going to be in charge of this?
As far as the engineering, yes.
Okay, do we have a set price for what is over already, what they're going to charge us?
We have a contract with them for the design. Now, I'm, I'm, the preliminary engineering, the second phase is, is underway. Now, I'm not sure how this works, if, I, I don't, don't recall what the, the kind, what the, the contract that was approved through, council approved it several weeks ago. I don't recall off the top of my head if that's for the full design and engineering, construction engineering on, on the bike trail, if it's funded, or if they are just going through with preliminary engineering two and getting the design done, so it can be put out, put out to bid and built.
Well, according to that last meeting, if I believe correctly, is, I said no to it because there's more, they want to get more funding over what they're already allocated for more plans. And I don't want to be stuck with a plan where they're going to charge us two hundred thousand dollars for their, for their plans, like they did before and some stuff, you know.
I, I will say that's, that's just the nature of, of design.
For me to belong with this, I want them to tell us how much more they want to charge us before I vote on this plan.
Mayor, how do you recommend?
Yes, I'm sorry, Chris.
No, I understand.
I had to turn off my phone.
No, I understand. I, I guess my question is, why can't we have both? We may not be able to have both at this time, but these grants come up every year, correct?
Yeah, the ITEP is every other year, so two thousand twenty-six will be another round.
Okay, so it's not ending the bike trail forever if we switch during the sidewalks? Secondly, to Alderman's point, we don't have TIF in Ward Six for a lot of them, so we don't have a source of funding for sidewalks at all. And I do have a lot of constituents complaining about it. I do have one person that's, that's bike trail crazy, who will not like the fact that we don't do this, but the rest of them are really complaining about sidewalks on the Scuta, Charles Church, et cetera, in downtown area. They're in terrible shape. And I don't know how I go to my constituents and say, hey, look at this great bike trail we have over here that continue to have sidewalks you can't walk on in a lot of places. That's my only thing. If we can get the grant this year for that, for the sidewalks, and then come back in the following year and get the grant for, try to get the grant for the bike trail, and maybe by then on the other piece that goes to the new county trail, why can't we do both? Do the sidewalks now and do that one later and address the immediate needs, problems we have? So we don't have the funding for sidewalks, you know, our, our ward has a lot of them.
Okay, Jamie?
Just to clarify here, doing this, switching it to a side, sorry, switching it to a sidewalk? That, and it's due, you said Monday?
Monday.
And today is Tuesday, and I'm wondering, because I don't know, because it's not my job, but I know it's an intense, like, process to do all of this, is there even time to switch it at this point?
I, I was going to respond to some of the comments.
Yeah.
I probably spent close to eighty, a hundred hours on, on these two applications that we've done already, where, where I'm this close to the bike trail, you know, application. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm that close as well on the streetscape application. It's, it's not a one-pager. There are, not only, we have to go photographs of, photographs, maps, narrative on each section. And I appreciate, I mean, I, I do want to apply for that sidewalk funding, but if you, if you, if you direct me to do this round, I will do my best, but I can't guarantee it'll be, it'll be finished by Monday, just because, and, and we have to have a, a resolution passed by you as well. And it just, if someone had come to me a month ago, you know.
But we didn't know.
But the concern is, you say you spent eighty to a hundred hours on this other one, we weren't aware that was happening. This came to us as a special meeting last week, when I immediately started investigating what ITEP is and what the funding allowable's are. So, I mean, to, to give the council here the, the fair accessibility, I appreciate all your efforts, but had I known you were working all your time on a project that doesn't support the constituents of all eight wards, I would have discouraged that at that point.
Plus, this has been going on for over ten years, so if it gets another birthday, I don't, I don't think you would have heard that they have another birthday until next year. Notwithstanding your efforts, and I'm not diminishing your efforts almost to a point there, because I'm sure you've put a million hours to find, you know, the ten years, but.
Yes, Dennis?
And Brian, I agree with you a hundred percent, what you said, I really do. But I can see Eric's point, that he's got to get it done, and maybe next year we can go for the other grant for the sidewalks. But there's only one thing I want to hear. I, Cascadia's doing engineering on it, they already got paid for the portion, what they already did. I don't want them to come back and say, well, you owe us another two hundred thousand dollars.
Carmen?
No, that's all.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis.
That's all I'm saying. I, I want to know, right, what, what the cost is going to be for them?
Okay, Carmen?
I want to see them front.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering why nothing was done for ten years? And is there ever a study done?
This isn't the first project that we have had with that engineering firm.
It's because of Cascadia.
That hasn't, actually, I don't want to say it's because of Cascadia, but we have several that have been twelve to fourteen years.
As, as I mentioned before, sorry to interrupt, it was the, the, the issue was with the railroad. We could not get access, they, they went back and forth for years.
Do we have it?
And then we had to redo redesign after redesign, and then finally it was determined that the railroad was not going to allow any, any cross, crossings for the bike trail.
And are there any studies ever done to see how much traffic actually is on any of the bike trails? Like any kind of strips to count how many people use it, you know?
I, I don't know that, I mean, do you know that, Cliff? Would that come out of your department or Eric? Do you know?
I don't know if any, any traffic study's been done on the trails.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I was going to call Kent, because he had his hand up for a while. Kent?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to address one of the questions I think that Dennis raised here about the eight thousand dollars, okay, that we contracted with Cascadia on. That was for documentation for the grant application for the twelfth to seventeenth street streetscape. Is that not correct, Eric?
I believe, and I, again, I haven't looked at that in a while, if, if, they were updating the numbers on one or both of the projects.
Yeah, so this Phase Two, okay, and to Eric's point, this thing has gone back and forth with the railroad over delays in terms of an easement for a crossing over the railroad tracks, which we finally found out, okay, it's like, no, it's never going to happen. So this thing is going, has been going on for a long time. We are this close, okay, to having an application in for this grant that is due on Monday. And again, while I appreciate Brian's efforts here, I do believe that the sidewalks is a separate issue. This is, this plan calls for a share-o down West Main Street. And if, you know, I had any input into it, I would suggest that the share-o, is it on both sides of West Main Street?
I believe it's just on the south side and then there's a cross.
The south side? Well, I would suggest that it goes to the north side, crossing at Seventieth Street at Foley Drive, so that when you are going to connect to the other trail, the MetroLink trail, you won't have to be crossing Main Street again. In order to get there, you'll just take a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn on the sixth, sixty-sixth street to get to that trail, once it's complete.
Jamie?
If I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
I would encourage the council, okay, to treat the sidewalk and the bike trail here as separate issues, and to go back to the original motion, so that we can get this application completed, so that we can finish up this bike trail, to the mayor's point in terms of how many people use it. I know that the, from Signal Hill down to Wesley Drive, there is a humongous amount of usage. I see people, when I used to go to work taking Foley Drive, you know, walking their dogs or biking, and that was every single day of the week.
Okay. Yes, Jamie?
In terms of moving forward, what, what Brian has done and, and found out and leads, leads me to wonder if going forward, moving forward with grants and, and things that Eric does, if their, their process of that doesn't maybe need to be a little more transparent to the council in terms of just a simple, like, these are the grants we're working on this month, they're for this. And, and then that way, we are informed, and for those of us who are overachievers like Brian, who we love, it gives you time then to put your input on, onto things like that and to, to have a say before we get to this point, and then it, it does feel a little too late.
Shelley?
Yeah, I'm just curious, Mayor, do you have any ideas when, when we're writing for grants? Do you know what the grants are being written for?
Some I do discuss with Eric.
So did you know about this one?
I knew about it, actually, I know about the ITEP because, and that the money would go back, because we were down with IDOT.
Yeah, but I'm asking about, did you know he has spent this many hours on writing this grant?
Not, not, I didn't know how many hours he spent on it.
Okay, but you knew he was writing this grant?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's not like, it's not Eric's fault for not being transparent? So I want to make sure that's clear. I'm not at all blaming anyone for this. We want the most money we can get, correct? So when we see a grant, we write the grant.
Well, yes, Eric's been doing a, a great job, because he's been writing grants and getting larger grants too for the, the community.
Right, right. And my concern is, and Brian, I agree, our sidewalks need it, I, I get that. But my concern is, he has written this grant right now and taken a lot of time. It was not transparent to us, but it was transparent among our administration. So, so my whole thing is, I, I feel like it's almost a slap in the face to throw something at Eric now and ask him to change something up when it is due Monday. I think that is a lot to ask.
I'd like to address what you just said.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot more that's going on, which is fine, but I just want to tell you that the ITEP grant, we knew about, we actually, Garrett had even talked to Jay Hoffman about getting more money, because we also have the whole situation with the Freeburg Roundabout with this whole thing. And so as far as the ITEP grant, I will tell you that Eric and I have discussed it several times. Decisions were still being made whether or not we were going to get money, extra money from Jay's office. We also have discussed it three or four times with Garrett during our Thursday meetings. So we have had discussion on this.
No, I agree. I'm totally agreeing with you. I, I'm saying you ha, you have had discussions.
Yeah.
But I feel like it would be not in, he's put a lot of work into this, and to ask him to all of a sudden change it for something that is due Monday is a slap in the face to Eric, because that is a lot to ask him to do by Monday. I just think it's a lot.
Anyone else for discussion? Yes, Mary?
I just want to say, years ago, I wrote grants for education, and there was a specific title for it. You couldn't change what it was for. You know, it would be a specific, which Eric said, this is specific to the bike trail.
But it hasn't been applied for yet.
And, and like, Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to add, I guess, and Eric, you can correct
me if I'm wrong with this, I had talked with staff at East West Gateway, who indicated to me they felt we still had plenty of time to, to put this together, to, to get it before that deadline. I don't know if their staff offers assistance towards doing that, but that is what, I would not have brought this to the council tonight had they not encouraged, when, when I inquired about this grant, that it was still well within the time. I, I'm not in doing anything here to, to insult your efforts on, on any of the work you've done. I'm just looking for a project that better benefits all eight wards of our city with a, a, a product that is much more closer to the residents that, that we deal with. So I mean, I would like to, I, I don't know where you're saying that you don't think it could be done or.
By the way, I did not take offense to any, any comments about what I do, so I have not taken any of this personally. Despite my, you know, change in title, grants is not the only thing I'm doing. I'm still, I've been, the last two days, I've been working on updates of the, meeting with our consultant on the updates, the historic district guidelines. We've got TIF and.
Notwithstanding your efforts, and I'm not diminishing your efforts almost publicly there, because I'm sure you've put a million hours to find out what ten years, but.
Yes, Dennis.
And Brian, I agree with you a hundred percent, what you said, I really do. But I can see Eric's point, that he's gotta get it done. And maybe next year we can go for the other grant for sidewalks. But there's only one thing I want to hear. I'd, Cas Caskia's doing an engineering on it. They already got paid, for the portion what they already did. I don't want them to come back and say, well, you owe us another two hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, Carmen?
That's all I'm saying.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennis.
That's all I'm saying. I want to invite you, what, what the cost is going to be for them.
Okay, Carmen?
I wanna see up front.
I was just wondering why nothing was done for ten years? And is there ever a study done?
Oh, I'm sorry. This isn't the first project that we have had with that engineering firm.
It's because of Cas Caskia.
That hasn't, actually, I don't wanna say it's because of Cas Caskia, but we have several that have been twelve to fourteen years.
As, as I mentioned before, sorry to interrupt, it was the, the, the issue was with the railroad. We could not get access, they, they went back and forth for years.
Do we have it?
And then, we had to redo redesign after redesign, and then finally it was determined that the railroad was not going to allow any, any cross, crossings for the bike trail.
And are there any studies ever done to see how much traffic actually is on any of the bike trails? Like, any kind of strips to count how many people use it, you know?
I, I don't know that, I mean, do you know that, Cliff? Would that come out of your department, or Eric? Do you know?
I don't know if any, any traffic study has been done on the trails.
Yeah, okay. Um, oh, I was gonna call Ken, because he had his hand up for a while. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm gonna address one of the questions I think that Dennis raised here about, uh, the eight thousand dollars, okay, that we contracted with Cas Caskia on, that was for documentation for the grant application for the, um, twelfth to seventeenth street, streetscape. Is that not correct, Eric?
I believe, and again, I haven't looked at that in a while, if, they were updating the numbers on one or both of the projects.
Yeah, so, this phase two, okay, and to Eric's point, um, this thing has gone back and forth with the railroad over delays in terms of an easement for crossing over the railroad tracks, which we finally found out, okay, it's like, no, it's never going to happen. So this thing is going, has been going on for a long time. We are this close, okay, to having an application in for this grant that is due on Monday. And again, while I appreciate Brian's efforts here, I do believe that the sidewalks is a separate issue. This is, this plan calls for a share-o down West Main Street. And if, you know, I had any input into it, I would suggest that the share-o, uh, is it on both sides of West Main Street?
I believe it's just on the south side, and then there's a cross.
The south side, well, I would suggest that it goes to the north side, crossing at Seventieth Street at Foley Drive. So that when you are going to connect to the, um, uh, other trail, the MetroLink trail, you won't have to be crossing Main Street again. In order to get there, you'll just take a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn on the sixth, Sixty-Sixth Street to get to that trail, once it's complete.
Jamie?
Uh, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
I would encourage the council, okay, to treat the sidewalk and the bike trail here as separate issues, and to go back to the original motion, so that we can get this application completed, so that we can finish up this bike trail, to the mayor's point, in terms of how many people use it. I know that the, from Signal Hill down to Wesley Drive, there is a humongous amount of usage. I see people, when I used to go to work taking Foley Drive, you know, walking their dogs or biking, and that was every single day of the week.
Okay. Yes, Jamie?
Um, in terms of moving forward, um, what, what Brian has done and, and found out and leads, leads me to wonder if going forward, moving forward with grants and, and things that Eric does, if their, their process of that doesn't, maybe need to be a little more transparent to the council, in terms of just a simple, like, these are the grants we're working on this month, they're for this, and, and then that way, we are informed. And for those of us who are overachievers, like Brian, who we love, um, it gives you time then to put your input on, onto things like that, and to, to have a say before we get to this point, and then it, it does feel a little too late.
Shelley?
Yeah, I'm just curious, um, Mayor, do you have any ideas when, when we're writing for grants? Do you know what the grants are being written for?
Some I do discuss with Eric.
So, did you know about this one?
I knew about it, actually, I know about the ITAP because, and that the money would go back, because we were down with I-DOT.
Yeah, but I'm asking about, did you know he has spent this many hours on writing this grant?
Not, not, I didn't know how many hours he spent on it.
Okay, but you knew he was writing this grant?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, it's not like, it's not Eric's fault for not being transparent, so I wanna make sure that's clear. I'm not at all blaming anyone for this. We want the most money we can get, correct? So when we see a grant, we write the grant.
Well, yes, Eric's been doing a, a great job, because he's been writing grants and getting larger grants, too, for the, the community.
Exactly. Right, right. And my concern is, and Brian, I agree, our sidewalks need it, I, I get that. But my concern is, he has written this grant right now and taken a lot of time. It was not transparent to us, but it was transparent among our administration. So, so my whole thing is, I, I feel like it's almost a slap in the face to throw something at Eric now, and ask him to change something up when it is due Monday. I think that is a lot to ask.
Uh, I'd like to address what you just said.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot more that's going on, which is fine. But I just wanna tell you that the ITAP grant, we knew about. We actually, Garrett had even talked to Jay Hoffman about getting more money, because we also have the whole situation with the Freiburg Roundabout, with this whole thing. And so, as far as the ITAP grant, I will tell you that Eric and I have discussed it several times. Uh, decisions were still being made whether or not we were going to get money, extra money from Jay's office. We also have discussed it three or four times with, uh, Garrett during our Thursday meetings. So we have had discussion on this.
No, I agree, I'm totally agreeing with you. I, I'm saying you ha, you have had discussions.
Yeah.
But I feel like it would be not in, he's put a lot of work into this, and to ask him to all of a sudden change it for something that is due Monday, is a slap in the face to Eric, because that is a lot to ask him to do by Monday. I just think it's a lot.
Anyone else for discussion? Yes, Mary?
I just wanna say, um, years ago I wrote grants for education, and there was a specific title for it. You couldn't change what it was for. You know, it would be a specific, which Eric said, this is specific to the bike trail.
But it hasn't been applied for yet.
And, and like, Mayor, I'd like to, I'd like to add, I guess, and Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong with this, um, I had talked with staff at East West Gateway, who indicated to me, they felt we still had plenty of time to, to put this together, to, to get it before that deadline. Um, I don't know if their staff offers assistance towards doing that, um, but that is what, I would not have brought this to the council tonight, had they not encouraged, when, when I inquired about this grant, that it was still well within the time. Uh, I, I'm not in doing anything here to, to insult your efforts on, on any of the work you've done. I'm just looking for a project that better benefits all eight wards of our city with a, a, a product that is much more closer to the residents that, that we deal with. So, I mean, I would like to, I, I don't know where you're saying that you don't think it could be done, or.
Uh, by the way, I did not take offense to any, any comments about what I do, so, uh, I have not taken any of this personally. The, despite my, you know, uh, change in title, uh, grants is not the only thing I'm doing. I'm still, I've been, the last two days I've been working on updates of the, uh, meeting with our consultant on the updates, the historic district guidelines. Uh, we've got TIF and enterprise own applications that deal with daily, uh, we're working on the, you know, the, we'll have, I think, maybe one or two TIF applications that I've been working on for next week's, or the next EDNA meeting. Um, Cliff and I haven't actually had a chance to talk about this yet. So, if I only worked on this grant, and I had all the information at hand, I could probably pull it together. Uh, but there's, there's a lot, uh, that I, I'd have to take a look and, you know, you mentioned, you know, eight, eight separate stretches, and, and how many feet of, of?
It would be two thou, up to two thousand feet of sidewalk in each ward, um, to, to meet the engineer's estimate of what it cost us per square foot of sidewalk, for sidewalk replacement. Um, and then, the eight different sections is merely to, to benefit all eight wards of the city. The, the locations selected were based upon recommendations that these areas are most susceptible to a ward, on high arterial routes, surrounding parks, surrounding schools, so that's why those locations were, were selected.
Uh, and I think, to, to your point about, or your, your question of, or comment about benefiting just one ward, I, I would disagree with that, because this does make a connection that goes down. It, it, the bike trail, you know, it connects, uh, other, other areas of towns, not just this one section of, uh, you know, not ward, you know, just Ward Eight. So it goes to, uh, citizens, and it goes to Bellevue, and it goes to the other, other areas. So there are other connections, and, and it does affect other wards, because there is now, there would be then a connection that isn't there, that I think would be beneficial to, to all citizens, and.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just, I thought, I, are there letters of support, a lot of letters of support that you've gotten already for the project?
That's, that's what I'm working on tomorrow, is getting letters of support from, uh, local officials, as well as businesses and, and any other folks who are willing to.
Okay, I think, Phil, you had a question?
Yeah, this is an unfortunate situation, it's one that we're backed into. Uh, my concern is, what I've already heard, that there's a risk here that, uh, we can't fulfill the application process. The other questions about the sidewalk idea, which is fantastic, but who evaluated these sidewalks, by the way?
I, I personally did. This was a project I put together to, to find areas based on the recommendations of what award the best. I looked for the, the areas on the highest arterial routes and, and, and surrounding parks and schools.
All right. The, uh, and, and six, eight months ago, the sidewalk idea may have gotten a lot more love than the bike path idea. The only reason I think that, uh, I think I got lead towards the bike path is because of the deadline, and because of, it's already been worked on for so long. But now we know, the next ITAP grant in two years, we admitted right now, two-year warning to sidewalks. Because I'd hate for us to lose out on both.
And, and, and now I've got some direction in terms of research, uh, on other funding. You know, ITAP's not the only, the only grant source that, that we can use, you know, for sidewalks, I think, like, it gives me something to search. Now, if, if I'm directed to, to, uh, complete the sidewalk application, I'll do my best to get it done. I know there are about twelve attachments that have to be completed, in addition to all the, uh, the eight narrative sections, and, and the, the budget, and the, you know, the, uh, cost estimates that have to be put together, um, and the maps, and photo, photographs of each, each section of sidewalk that we're talking about, where I have to physically walk and do those photographs. I will do my best to get that done.
And my last thought, Brian, was, I appreciate you doing all that on your own. I'm not so sure that Dennis and I would say that that's our, uh, most needed sidewalk area. Now, it would be residential, it needs to be, to schools and parks, but we have several schools and parks that may benefit better by an engineer studying, or, uh, MetroEast, or, or East West Gateway, or, you know, somebody other than an alderman just saying where they, they think they should go. Now, you didn't do anything wrong, uh, you did a great job, I'm sure, but I'm not so sure, I can't say here, sit here off the top of my head and say, oh yeah, that sidewalk that you set in our ward is where it needs to go. I don't know. Might be.
How long, is there going to be a time limit on this, that whoever the engineer is on this project, if we go with a whole totally different engineering company? Or if we go with the engineering firm that has done the first design? Because I know that there's issues with that, because last time this came forward, there were, for lack of a better term, not so nice emails sent to engineers that wanted to come forward, and they were told that if they did, there would be a problem for them. So, I don't know if, uh, if there's gonna be a timeline if we go, that it has to be done in so much time, so we don't end up into a, a relationship that is another couple of years. Can you, of course, I don't know how we could.
I can't speak to any comments that were made to any firms, or anything like that.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, we'd obviously would, would, uh, there is a timeline on the grant if it's, if it's received, you know.
Would it be the ten years it's been in the past?
Yeah, but I, I would anticipate it being done, because there, I mean, there are some right-of-way acquisitions, or some easements that would need to be acquired, and that's, that's in the application, uh, you know, and that's even budgeted for in the application. The, the, the delay would not be, the, the railroad was, was the delay, and the reason the project never happened, is my understanding. So, uh, I think, yeah, we would certainly have a, a, a timeline and, for completion, so that we could get the project done and, and move on.
Right, okay, Shelley?
So, so, I, I'm confused, because you're bringing up the engineering company, but the engineering company wasn't the reason it was delayed, the railroad is why it was delayed.
I'm just saying that we don't want another ten, ten to twelve years of projects, yeah.
I understand that, but it wasn't an engineering deal, it was a railroad deal, correct?
Well, some people have asked if we use, if we could start with a different engineering company. Some people have asked me that. But that doesn't mean that it has to be done.
Okay, got you.
Yes.
Okay, my question is, I guess, um, are they going to be able to send in the engineering company, whoever it is? If it stays Cas Caskia, or if a new one is approved? We're gonna be spending more money on engineering stuff, and I think we should spend our money where we're gonna get more for our money, like our sidewalks. We got an in-house engineer, we pay, we're not gonna be spending mon, more money, we're gonna get our money a bang for our buck, I mean, it's gonna be here. This should have been brought up a long time ago, not ten years now, I mean. This, and what is the cost increase gonna be? Is it gonna be the same as it was when this was first brought up?
Okay, yes, Kara?
That, that is my question, you know, what are we talking about money-wise here, because in this, it says twenty percent, and then a fifty percent match, but there are no other numbers. I, I would wanna see those. And my point, I agree with alderperson arrows, I think we have a bigger problem here than sidewalks versus bike trails. I think we have a communication problem. I am the Ward Eight alderperson, I didn't get any other, I'm the newest one here, so I'll take that. But I don't know ten years ago, fifteen years ago, what happened. Some people might, some people might not. But then to be forced at the eleventh hour to make a decision, really, and I don't know, I'm not blaming anybody, but when your hands are tied, you can't make, if we would have had a great decision. I think if we would have had time to debate this like we are now, it would have been a lot more beneficial to everybody. So, I would encourage all departments to maybe email us. I think if we had a monthly email from every department, that would be great, 'cause I don't know what other ITAP grants are out there, and I don't know if you guys do. And other aldermen have said, they're not for special meetings. When we keep calling special meetings, they don't like it, and I agree. I understand things have to get done, and I am not disparaging the Economic Development Department, but I think we have a larger problem than sidewalks versus bike trails. And if that doesn't get cleaned up, this kinda stuff's gonna continue to happen.
Can I, can I comment to, respond to that? So, uh, the only reason this is coming to a special meeting, this was supposed to go on the last agenda, and you did approve the ITAP, the, the resolution for the streetscape application, uh, because when I sent it to the clerk's office, the email didn't go through. Otherwise, it would have been on that agenda. And I was, I was at a conference, running a conference on that Friday, the agenda came out, and did not see the agenda until Monday. Uh, so otherwise, this would have been on that agenda for your approval, and we would not have had that.
But this has been going on, like, this is due the thirtieth, right?
Right.
So, we could have talked about this two months ago, six months ago, last year, and I'm not disparaging, I know you've put in a ton of hours. I know these grants are overwhelmingly time-consuming. I get it. But I think it speaks to the larger problem that we don't even know that this, we're up against a deadline I didn't even know we had.
Yes.
I, I've, I've heard you say it a couple of times now, Eric, and I just, I guess it's put a different concern in my head. So, we did approve the ITAP application for twelfth to seventeenth street, and I wasn't putting two and two together till now. So are we really putting two applications to the same grant fund that we're gonna, basically twelfth and, twelfth to seventeenth is gonna be competing against this bike trail for funding?
You are, yeah, you're allowed to submit as many applications as you'd like, and there's no limit to the number that can be funded.
Have we ever historically received simultaneous grants from the same provider?
Uh, I don't believe we've applied for more than one at the same time. Hey, here, here's another, uh, just to backtrack when I started with the history of this, so, uh, we were initially, we, we had already started the application for twelfth to seventeen, uh, when, uh, we talked about the possibility of having to give the original grant back. Uh, we were trying to get an extension on that, uh, and we didn't hear until recently, it's probably two weeks ago, that we were gonna have to reapply for the bike trail. So, we were already three-quarters of the way through the streetscape application, when it came back to us that we were encouraged to reapply for the bike trail.
I guess that's just where I have the bigger concern now, of competing against ourselves. To me, the twelfth to seventeenth streetscape is a much more important project.
Mary?
Um, I have two questions. One is, isn't there a St. Clair County Grants Department?
Yes.
Yeah, and do we work with them? Because Foley Drive, uh, uh, you know, in St. Clair County, Foley Drive ends in our city limits. There's some areas there that, I think we could work with the county with the grants. And then my second thing is, I agree with, um, Kara, that the communication just hasn't been there. I'm so confused at this point.
The, the Grants Department, the, the County Grants Department is not, uh, the, the only county grants that we, we've gotten in the past have been through the Parks Commission, not the Grants Department, so that's, that's a.
Okay, so the parks would be part of a bike trail, right?
Right, but typically their grants are like twenty-five thousand, thirty-five thousand, something like that, maybe fifty.
But do we work with them across the aisle?
Yeah, we've gotten several.
Okay, 'cause I know Foley Drive goes like this, and then it's county, it's not us. You know, there's a lot of overlap.
Are you finished, Mary?
Yes.
Dennis?
Um, like I said, I agree with Brian a hundred percent, and I think we're just beating a dead horse here. I mean, he's got a time limit, and, and Brian, I, God bless you, I love that idea, I really do. But let's get on with it, let's, it's too, I think it's too late to be adding different stuff, let's just go with the bike trail, let's get it over with. But like I said, uh, when you do this, I'd just like, whoever does the engineering on it, because there's gonna be more engineering costs in this. I know, I know the fact, but I don't want no outrageous numbers coming, that, well, it's another hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand more for engineering, or this, or that. No, I like to see your number up front, and they can do that, they know what the cost is offhand, and they can put it up front. That's the only thing I wish you would do, but I'm, just, just go on with this bike trail, let's get it over with, 'cause I don't think we're gonna get anywhere where you're going.
Okay, so, let me understand this correctly. We're putting in an ITAP grant for possibly the bike trail and twelfth through seventeenth street? Why can't we also do Brian's proposal? Like, if we're gonna do, get, try to get all this funding, why don't we, like Chris said, why don't we do it all? Maybe we can't do it all at the same time. But then, why don't we put another grant together for the sidewalk program, and see if we are eligible, any of those three projects are selected?
As I said, if I'm directed to apply for that street, for the sidewalks, I will do my best to get that completed by Monday.
I'm just saying, like, if that's the whole point now, we've never competed against ourself, but now we are, what's the harm in doing all of them?
I think it's just the time commitment, right now, that, what he doesn't, you know, he doesn't have.
I think the harm is, potentially, whoever's doing the selecting here, and if I'm looking at a pool of applicants, I'm gonna pick one from a community, not three.
Right.
So the question is, which one would you pick? I mean, I don't know.
Well, that's the gamble, right? That's when you apply for a grant.
That's just like, so I mean, we're already risking that now, we're doing the two, but if you do three, I, I don't think, it doesn't make any better, in my view. Eric, what do you think, how do they pick grants? I mean, just generally, what's your thoughts? Are they gonna pick two from one community?
I can't, I can't, uh, looking at the crystal ball and tell you what they would do.
Probability-wise, I mean, have, what experience have you had of picking multiple projects from the same community?
I don't think it's likely, it's possible.
I know it's possible, it's not likely, that's my opinion, you work with grants.
Yeah, but it also depends on, you know, if, if there are very few or no other applications from, from our region, our area, we have a higher chance, 'cause, you know, they try to spread this out throughout the state, uh, you know, give each area a certain amount, so, um.
Eric, um, there would prob, the grants would probably be reviewed by two different reviewers, would they not?
I don't know what the reviews.
Can I, I read grants for education.
I believe there's a, I believe there's a committee that.
There's a committee.
Uh, it's, it's, yeah, it's statewide, so, I don't know if it's broken down by region, and then they, they narrow it down, but it's, it's not one or two people that, that looks at these, is my understanding.
Do we have letters of support for the, uh, twelfth street?
I'm getting those. We, we, we had our, we had a public engagement, uh, last week or two week, two weeks ago. And so people had the opportunity to submit comments and things online. I talked to several business owners and residents. I gave them my card, asked, asked them to submit letters of support. I haven't received anything yet, but Cas Caskia is actually running the, the online system, and I reached out to them late today to see, you know, where that's at, what, I know there was a deadline where you could submit. So I'm, I'm waiting to get that, you know, the, the feedback, public feedback, 'cause that was, uh, you know, something that was, uh, crucial to the, uh, to the application, is having the, the public feedback.
Brian, do you think, is there anybody, do you think you could get letters of support if we decided to put in more?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, East West Gateway offered a letter of support, um, and I'm, I could work with, with others, but I, I have a concern about this competing against each other as well, so, I, I, I'm not in favor of doing three grants, all against ourselves, we're, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
And we don't wanna look too greedy.
Jenny, for clarification, we have a motion on the floor, the resolution in front of us, and if that resolution was amended, and that was seconded, the amendment, right?
Yes.
What's on the floor that needs to be voted on initially is the motion to amend.
Unless the people who motioned the amendment, what you're writing, I don't think, but, okay. Everybody's spoken. I have no problem with, call for the question, unless somebody's got something else to say. Call for a question, Mayor?
Okay. So, we need to either have a with, with, depending on, right now, the motion is on the floor to do the amendment, so we can vote on that first.
So, for voting?
Yes.
Good clarification, Jenny, clarifying, have you, have a yes vote is to?
The yes vote is to approve the amendment to the resolution.
That Brian had brought forward.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Duco?
Uh, no.
Eris?
No.
Randall?
No.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Anthony?
No.
Ovian?
No.
Schaefer?
No.
Steele?
Yes.
Rathwiler?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Wygant?
Yes.
Ostoff?
No.
Six yeses, eight noes. Motion fails to carry. So, now we go back to the original motion, yes? Or is that one dead?
Did somebody make the original motion?
Yeah, I have a motion and a second on the original. Okay. So, the original motion is for the ITAP, for the West Bubba Bike Trail Phase Two. Okay. Schneider?
No.
Duco?
Yes.
Eris?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Anthony?
Yes.
Ovian?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Steele?
Yes.
Rathwiler?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Wygant?
No.
Ostoff?
Yes.
Whitaker?
No.
Motion carries ten to four.
Okay, we move on. Hey, the next resolution, Resolution Thirty-five Twenty-two.
A resolution approves sites located in the city of Bubba, St. Clair County, Illinois, to be acquired, altered, and improved by the Public Building Commission of St. Clair County, Illinois, and leased by said commission to the County of St. Clair, Illinois.
Eris so moved.
Makes a lot of sense, didn't it?
Schaefer, second.
Okay. Any discussion on this resolution? Yes?
I do have one question. Is the city being compensated in any way for these properties?
The city doesn't own the properties. It's under Section Twelve of the Public Building Commission. You get to approve sites if the Public Building Commission is going to locate them entirely within your city. The Public Building Commission already owns these three properties.
Gotcha. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none? Let's do a roll call.
Duco?
Aye.
Eris?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Rathwiler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wygant?
Aye.
Ostoff?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Okay, no executive session this evening, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you very much.
Aye.